Good.
What's that?
Pretty good.
I'm good.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Tonight is the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors meeting for the month of December. Just a note before we begin, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the township's YouTube channel. With that, calling the meeting to order, I will ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is to the United States and to the Republic of America, for which it stands foundation under God, Jesus, with all His children.
I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on November 17th, November 25th, and on December 2nd to discuss personnel. And also draw your attention to our Euclid Township resolution establishing public participation rules and guidelines for public meetings, which is available at the back of the room. Any residents or taxpayers of the township who wish to address the board during the public comment period at the end of the public meeting should sign their names to a sign-in sheet that is provided at the back table. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street name. A business or an organization is encouraged to designate one person to present comments on its behalf. The speaker must direct all comments to the Board of Supervisors and not staff. Each speaker recognized by the board chair will be given three minutes to comment during the public comment period. No official board action will be taken on items presented during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Items may be referred to township staff and/or the appropriate working group or committee for further research and discussion. Matters addressed publicly to the board will be taken under advisement, and either the board will respond to the person raising the issue directly at a later date, or the board will respond to the items during a future public meeting as an agenda item. The board need not engage in discussion on comments offered. While the public has the right to make critical remarks, the public does not have the right to disrupt a meeting. In cases of serious disruption, the board will adjourn the meeting or take other such action to resolve the disruption as appropriate under the circumstances. With that, we will jump into our agenda tonight. First is the approval of the meeting minutes for November 10th, 2025. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Starting with our reports for this evening, we will start with Chief Alexander for the Police Department.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of November 2025, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 924 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued seven traffic citations. They investigated 18 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested four individuals. Additionally, for the month of November, the department members conducted one motor carrier detail at the weigh station, resulting in 351 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, two of which were found to be overweight. The officers also carried out 30 inspections requiring four vehicles to be placed out of service. During the detail, the officers were assisted by members of the Nether Providence Township Police Department, the Upper Chichester Township Police Department, West Goshen Township Police Department, and the Tridifern Township Police Department. During their normal workdays, Officer Matthew Lanchy and Officer Scott Luddy performed a total of six commercial motor vehicle inspections and placed one additional vehicle and one additional driver out of service. Year-to-date, the officers have documented 11,719 entries in our call reporting system. They've made 182 criminal arrests. They've written 1,238 citations, 427 warnings. They've investigated 315 motor vehicle crashes, and they have put 8,212 commercial motor vehicle over our scales. And for the month of November, we did not have any Narcan administrations.
Great, thank you. Treasures report?
Good evening. For the month of November through the month of November in our general fund, we've collected 85% of our budgeted revenues, and we've spent just a little over 80% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Public Works?
Good evening. For the month of November, the Road Department finished joint sealing for the year, repaired sinkholes on Timber Springs Drive and Canner Drive, reset an inlet on Wyndham Drive, completed building the retaining wall at Martin Park, cleared trees on Howe Road and Down Forge Road, inspected vehicles, and installed salt spreaders on all the dump trucks. They also performed vehicle and equipment maintenance. The Sewer Department, for the month of November, the daily average flow to the Downingtown area regional treatment facility was 1.26 million gallons per day. We recorded 1.8 inches of rain for the month. Normal rainfall for November is 2. or 3.20 inches. Current year-to-date rainfall is 28.55 inches, giving Euclid Township a rainfall deficit of 13.75 inches for the year. They responded to 131 notifications from the Pennsylvania OneCall system, and the staff continues to clean and televise and repair pipes and manholes in the 2026 paving project area. They cleaned a total of 4,900, cleaned and televised a total of 4,998 feet of sewer pipe and 961 feet of storm pipe. The Parks Department, the staff assisted the Road Department with rebuilding the retaining wall and constructing a fence on top of the wall at Martin Park. They sanded and stained picnic tables, installed river rock at Target Park, blew off the walking trails. They have removed the AEDs from the parks for the winter, disassembled the soccer nets for the winter, and did year-end equipment maintenance. That's all I have.
Thank you. Building and zoning?
Yes. Good evening. For the month of November, the department issued 91 permits for construction. Total of 169 inspections were conducted. 23 fire inspections were conducted. 79 use and occupancy certificates were issued. The Fire Marshal responded to 11 incidents and had two fire investigations for the month.
And Lionville Fire Company?
Sure. The Lionville Fire Company responded to 56 incidents during the month of November. Thirty-one of them were at Euclid, nine in Upper Euclid, three in West Pike Land, thirteen in other townships, bringing year-to-date total to 682 incidents.
Thank you. And is there anyone here this evening from Euclid? Nope. All right. Is there any board questions or comments regarding the reports? Any public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to tonight's business agenda. Number one, we have Resolution Number 2025-32, Euclid Township 2026 Budget Adoption.
Thank you. It's recommended that the board adopts Resolution 2025-32, adopting the 2026 budget in the total amount of $26,829,067.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2025-32, the Euclid Township 2025 Budget. 2026 budgets, sorry.
A second question.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? With that, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number two, Resolution Number 2025-33, establishing the tax rate for the calendar year 2026.
It's recommended the board adopt Resolution 2025-33, adopting the 2026 tax rates as follows. General Fund at .3 mils, the hydrant fund at .125 mils, EMS at .3 mils, fire at .3 mils, for a total mileage of 1.025 mils, which are necessary to support the adopted budget.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-33, setting the tax rate for the general township purposes, fire hydrants, emergency medical services, and fire protection for calendar year 2026.
I'll second. Any board questions or comments? Any public comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number three, ordinances. A. Ordinance Number 2025-15, Chapter 200 Sewers. Mr. Freed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 200 on sewers, which would, which does, among other things, impose sewer rentals, where charges for the use of the township sewer system upon the owners of property served or to be served by such sewer system. We have four exhibits for tonight's hearing. Exhibit, Board Exhibit 1 is the proposed ordinance 2025-15. Board Exhibit 2 is the notice of hearing to the Daily Local. Or Exhibit 3 is the proof publication of the ordinance on November 21st, 2025. And Board Exhibit 4 is their certificate of posting. And for the most part, it's essentially setting the sewer rates. I don't know if either the manager or Public Works has any additional comment. So if the board is so inclined, they can make the motion and vote on this ordinance.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2025-15, Chapter 200 Sewers.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. B. Ordinance Number 2025-16, Chapter 195, Hotels, Motels, Inns, Ordinance Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an amendment to ordinance in Chapter 195, dealing with hotels, motels, and inns, property maintenance regulations. This is an ordinance that was enacted about a year ago, and as it's been applied, I think it's, it's just through practice, it's appeared that certain tweaks would be helpful. I expect the ordinance will probably continue to be tweaked as you move forward and fine-tune it. For the purposes of this proposed ordinance, there's a number of changes. I won't go through them all, but one of them is, right now, it says you cannot have any lodging for more than 30 consecutive days. The implication there was that person would leave and not be coming back the same day. Apparently, that has not been happening, so we're clarifying that issue by creating a provision that says, under no circumstances shall lodging be provided for more than 28 consecutive days or 28 days within a 35-day period, which would require some sort of break. There's a, there's new provisions regarding the demand on public safety resources and other amendments to some of the current provisions. We have four exhibits for tonight's hearing. Board Exhibit 1 is the proposed ordinance 2025-16. Board Exhibit 2 is the notice of hearing to the Daily Local. Board Exhibit 3 is the proof of publication on November 21st, 2025. And Board Exhibit 4 is their certificate of posting. So I will turn it back over to the board if they want to consider moving it for passage and acting on it.
So I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-16 to amend Chapter 195 for hotels, motels, and inns, property maintenance regulations.
I'll second that. Is there any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
I will close the hearing.
All right, we'll move on to number four, permission to advertise stop sign ordinance at Rice Boulevard and Wexford Road.
Yes, we are looking for permission to advertise the stop sign as indicated. We did have Bowman, our traffic engineer, review the request for the always stop, which they did approve, well, they did indicate that it is necessary, since the Planned Life Care Facility is currently under construction, where that driveway is will line up with Wexford, so it makes sense to have an always stop there. So if you're okay with that, we'd like permission to advertise that ordinance.
I'll move to allow the advertisement of the stop sign ordinance at Rice Boulevard and Wexford Road.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number five, approval of Township Manager employment agreement.
This item is the Township Manager Employment Agreement, a first for the township and is reflective of more modern-day practices. The document's been vetted by the township solicitor and HR consultant, and it outlines the responsibilities, compensation, benefits, performance expectations, and other conditions of employment for the township manager. And it's something similar that we would look to do upon hiring the next police chief.
Make motion to approve the Township Manager Employment Agreement.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? All right, with that, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number six, approval of use of personal electronic devices and workplace recording policy and employee handbook statement.
It's recommended that the board adopt a use of personal electronic devices and workplace recording policy and the associated employee handbook statement. This policy establishes clear expectations for employee use of personal phones, tablets, and similar devices in the course of their employment.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of personal electronic device and workplace recording policy and employee handbook statement.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? That'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number seven, authorization for the Township Manager to enter into a contract with a CoStarz vendor USG for cured-in-place pipe repairs.
Seeking authorization to enter into a contract with CoStarz vendor USG, the amount of $30,225 for cured-in-place pipe repairs for sewer pipes identified as part of our annual monitoring program.
I'll make a motion to grant authorization to the Township Manager for contracts with CoStarz for the specified work.
I'll second. Is there any board questions or comments?
Are we voting on just the USG place pipe repairs or both?
I was gonna just do them one at a time.
Okay, gotcha.
Itemized them out.
Any public comment? That'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. And B, Westchester University for Quality of Life Survey.
Seeking authorization to enter into a contract with Westchester University, the amount of $40,064 for Quality of Life Survey. The actual cash cost of the township will be only $11,000, as Westchester University is providing $29,064 in in-kind services. The results from the survey will serve as an important tool in crafting a strategic plan next year.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to enter into a contract with Westchester University for Quality of Life Survey.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any public comment?
I just said, good job.
All right. With that, I will call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number eight, extension request, Lionville Station Road, PRD ordinance and tentative plan for Lionville Preserve.
Yes, as you know, the applicant Rockwell had submitted the PRD ordinance and tentative plan for Lionville Preserve, which is currently under review. We did receive an extension request from Lou Collegreco, their attorney, to extend the time to hold the public hearing to March 13th, 2026.
Thank you. Number nine, acceptance of the Eagleview Town Center to conditional use decision.
Yes, in response to the conditional use decision that was rendered November 10th pertaining to Eagleview Town Center, Town Center 2, Lot 20 and Lot 17, we did receive an email from Allison Zarro, who represents the Hanking Group, accepting the conditions of the conditional use decision.
Thank you. Number 10, special presentation. We have a bittersweet evening tonight. After eight years of very loyal and faithful service to the township, we unfortunately are having our last meeting with Chairperson Mamie Baumann this evening. She is going to be moving, moving along in her life to
I don't know why I'm moving away from this township. It's such a great place.
But we would certainly, you know, could not let this opportunity tonight pass without saying a few words of our appreciation for Mamie and her service to the township. It's been a quick and long eight years with Mamie here, and I know personally, coming in somewhere in the middle of that, I have learned so much from Mamie, and she has created so many opportunities within the township for community members to be involved and to grow in their roles and step into bigger roles. And I'm just so appreciative of what she established here and what it's grown into.
You're talking about this, you see.
I'm talking, talking about everything that has your fingerprint on it. Certainly, the EAC, I think, is, is an amazing accomplishment to hang your hat on, and it has evolved and continues to evolve and has become such an important part of the township, if you will. And so, you know, we're gonna miss you and we wish you well. And we want to take an opportunity to present a certificate from the State Association of Township Supervisors in honor of your eight years of service to the township. So you can look at this and think of us. I don't know if you want to share any words.
You don't have to.
Real quick, I think eight, about nine years ago, when you turned around in that meeting and said, hey, do you want to run for something? I said, sure. I don't think either one of us had any idea what we were getting into. I think it has been, I want, I think it was, I need people like that to push me and to do things like that. I thank you for that, because this has been a great experience working with you for these last eight years. And, you know, we'll continue to see each other, obviously, playing, play our board games and stuff like that, but, so we'll see you again, but I'll miss working with you.
Oh, thanks, Bill. Newsflash, I probably wouldn't have run if you didn't say, yes, sure. Oh, you know, because I was on the facts. It's definitely been a huge privilege to serve the community, and I just have been reflecting back and just flooded with gratitude for the time spent here. And working with you guys has been amazing. I appreciate your perspectives. You really care about the community and are smart and dedicated. And I, I tend to have a ton of ideas and not a whole lot of organization behind them, but, you know, Bill, your perspective, you know, your logical brain, you're just really smart and really care about people. I appreciate that about you. I can always count on Laura to ask, what's the timeline on that? You come with the organization and ideas plus organization really get things done. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished here in the past eight years. So, and I'd just like to thank the staff for all of your support. We felt your support from day one. And I've learned a lot in this job about all of the work that goes on behind the scenes. I'm sorry, I'm getting so weak. It's a little sad that it's ending. But there's a ton of work that goes on behind the scenes to make this township function. And you guys are the backbone of that work. And like I said, you've supported us from day one. You've always asked for our input. Sometimes it's like herding cats, trying to get, you know, feedback from all of us, but it just shows how much you care about the residents and the community. And it's always the, you're gonna miss the feeling I get walking into here, knowing that I'm doing good work with really good people. So, and I'd like to congratulate LaRaz for her recent election and wish you good luck. You're in very good hands, and I know the community is lucky to have you. You deserve the spot here on the board. And I'd finally like to thank my husband back there for supporting me and encouraging me and campaigning, canvassing. My kids have all canvassed with me. Bill's kids have canvassed with me. My kids did a lot of stuff for me and encouraged me. And over the past eight years, I'm really proud. All of my kids graduated from college in this past eight years. Isn't that crazy? All four of my kids, so I'm proud of them too. And they've managed to follow their dreams and also encouraged me to follow mine. So I'm just really grateful and like to say thank you.
It's a shared thread. We'll be here on the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM. There's a chair in the front row for you.
I'm gonna be listening for the gallons per day and rainfall total. I will never take for granted where the wastewater goes in this township.
I think we have a few friends that wanted to share a few sentiments as well.
We have members of the Euclid Township Council, and we would like to express our appreciation as well, in which you may exist. You ventured us, you got us going on Longwood and it's really been us involved in the Raccoon last week since we were in the crunch of high school work for. I'd also like to personally thank for approving and fostering and continuing the support of the Heart of Union project, which was my personal project from Heart of Euclid, but you made it become the township's project. And it's been very, very much a special experience, all of us to work with you. So we have made a donation to the Exercising Society honoring you, that is, and the significations, it's sports, immigrants, fellow leaders, the incident that we are trying to walk through the restaurants. And we have another
Oh, so sweet. Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much for the open it right here, right now. Okay. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my gosh. This is so pretty. Thank you so much. I just, I'm so grateful for all of the work that you do. The EAC, it was something that I wanted to do. You guys can see this. I'm not taking it out to his skill. I'm so thrilled that, before we were elected to office, like Tony was in my note, I met Tony at a pipeline meeting, I think, and I wrote down your name, because I knew I wanted to create an EAC here to focus on the environment. And I wrote down Tony's name, like, this is a lady who cares a lot about flowers and she's my first appointment on the board. So we've come so far, and I just really appreciate all the work that you guys do on that board. And Laura was chair of the board for a while. I really appreciate her stepping up to do that and then becoming a supervisor. Really great. Oh, my gosh, is this a Longwood Lego free house? Oh, look, hon, my husband, my husband, my birds. Thank you so much.
For those of you who don't know what this is, we were, these were all pre-aging Longwood a couple of years ago, and we were given them, and we got to wrap our to wrap our gardens with markers all in QR codes to information, and that's your personal Lego.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Like I said, I'm so grateful for everything you guys do for our community and for our environment.
Pretty. Nice bag.
I know. Yeah. Great bag, sustainable Euclid.
All right. All with that, I'll draw your attention to the announcements at the bottom of our agenda. If anyone has any questions about those, they can follow up after the meeting. Too many to read and remember for all of you, but a lot of things to note coming up with the holidays and township closures, so please check that out. And I will open the floor to public comments. I, you're, you're good. Okay. And I have Tony on here. If there's no other comments, that is the conclusion of our agenda for the evening, and I'll ask, if there's a motion to adjourn. So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.